Kissed the ground when I came back to Texas. Literally kissed the ground. I'm standing before you. I just had my last chemo two days ago. I was diagnosed with terminal cancer. I'm telling you, when I saw that these kind of things are happening, what am I going to do to protect my children? I think seeing my first grandchild, I look at these beautiful women, these beautiful girls, and I see how they were treated when I was over in their world, in their life. I'm tired of the lawlessness in this country, and the city of Irving must take a stand for the laws of this city, this nation, this state. You can't, I'm a registered nurse. I can't just say I'm a doctor just because my religion says, "Well, I'm going to heal people, I'm a doctor." No, there are laws set up for everybody's protection, whether you are Muslim, Christian, Jew. I'm just saying, the laws are here to protect everybody. And that doesn't mean that I can go start a court. I, I mean, if I felt like it, I could go start my own court. Is that what this is about? That does not make sense to me. I've lived in this country all my life, and that's lawlessness. And I'm not going to put up with that. I have a mosque right across from my children's high school. That's fine. They live in peace, we live in peace. This is not peace. Those statements that were made, they are not peaceful. And the way that these women have been treated is not peaceful. And that's all I have to say.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Kelly Ken, and I'm from Arlington. And I just wanted to come here in person. I had watched the last city council meeting online, and I was absolutely shocked. I just wanted to come here in person and thank you all for supporting the American laws for American courts. House bill currently being entered in Austin. And I wanted to do that in person. So, thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart and from a lot of people in Arlington. We have you back. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I just wanted to come tonight and say a couple of things. Thank you for your vote at the last meeting to support HB 562. I grew up in Irving, lived here all my life. My grandfather came here in the 30s. My father grew up here. I was born and raised here myself. And I've seen a lot of changes in Irving, obviously. I just want to express that, you know, my reason for supporting HB 562 is very simple. You know, as an American, I, you know, look to the Constitution of the United States, even if Texas, of course, built rights, rule of law. You know, that's just, that's what I was raised up to believe and stand for and support. What I don't understand is folks who say they're Americans, they pledge allegiance to the flag, and they say they support the Constitution. What I don't understand is how then they can also oppose this bill, for instance, who really at the crux of the bill is simply that we will not allow any foreign laws to be established or implemented. And so, that's why I support HB 562, because I can't, I can't see that I could support the Constitution at the same time say, "Yeah, I support, let's allow foreign laws to be established here." So, that's all I wanted to say. Again, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your support of HB 562. And all of my friends who made it out tonight, I want to say thank you, because some of them have never been to a city council meeting before. Some of them have come from out of town. Some of them have come from neighboring cities, like my friend who just came up from Arlington. So, I want to say thank you to all of y'all as well. God bless.
L A I T H. Alia, and then Don Wilson.
My name is Aliyah Salem, and I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. I'm going to reiterate this, I wasn't planning on it. But based on the comments that have come before, I'm going to reiterate it because I feel like it's important to identify who's sitting in your audience tonight. All of this flag-waving and expressions of patriotism under any given day, I would be touched by and moved by. I am an eighth-generation Texan. I am a daughter of the descendants of the Alamo. And I don't know if anybody here would like to step up and say that their family is responsible for creating this great state. That's the reality of the identity of many of the Muslims who are in this country and in this state. So, if anybody wants to question my patriotism because of the religion that I practice, please come and see me after this. What I wanted to say tonight is that I wanted to thank everybody who voted for and against this resolution. You have inspired more unity in this Irving community in the past two weeks than we have been able to inspire in an entire year. You've inspired your citizens to appreciate the importance of voting. And I was in Austin in a committee hearing for HB 562. And let's be clear, you can say that HB 562 is not targeting a particular religion until you're blue in the face. But based on the very public comments made, we know the intention behind this resolution. The outcome is this. Our community in Irving has had to endure death threats, ethnic and religious slurs at the hands of Irving residents in support of your resolution in these past two weeks. Thank you for showing us where your loyalties lie. Your citizens, your community of diverse citizens, no. So, thank you.
Chief, have you got many calls and emails? Are we handling, if we haven't?
Mayor, we've had some allegations and some investigations that are currently working. Nothing that we've been made aware of so far arises to the level of criminal activity. And so, in terms of death threats, as we traditionally might think of those, we've not been made aware of them yet.
Going to person when he does feel that they have any fore police protections, please give us a call. Don Wilson, followed by Nancy Pressler.
Mayor and Councilmen, my name is Don Wilson. I live at 1401 Colony Drive near Irving. I am here tonight as I was two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, I was here asking your support for the resolution supporting the House bill. I was pleased with the vote. I am here tonight to tell you that each and every one of you, I am extremely proud of. Mr. Love, Mr. Putnam, Mr. Stink, Mr. Ferris near Van Dyne, Mr. LaMorges, Mr. Meeger, Mr. Ward, Mr. Danish. I applaud you, because each of you voted according to your conscience. I fully believe that. I have not in any way seen, in the House bill, some of the things that the people here tonight are expressing exist. I am going to be going to the Islamic Center of Irving for a candidate forum within the next couple of weeks. And I hope to be able to learn a lot more about my brothers and my sisters that are here living within this town, learn more about them, and help to bring about unity within this city. But I applaud each of you for your vote, either for or against the bill or the resolution. And I think that we, as a city, owe a debt to each of you for being willing to take the hard choice and vote the way that each of you did. Thank you.
Hi. I'm not a good public speaker. I'm a teacher, and I usually control the classrooms. This is really intimidating for me.
Do you want to switch seats?
But I thought this was such an important issue that I couldn't avoid coming out to thank each one of you. And again, like Don Wilson just said, even if I disagreed with you, and some of you I vehemently disagreed with, I appreciate your service more than you'll ever know. For each one of you to sit there and spend all the time that you do leading this city as well as you do, heartfelt thanks from all of us. What I would like to say is, any time that I've found a situation that scares me really bad, and I truly do believe that there are people here that are scared, both sides. I think it's important for both sides to just calm down, let this play out, see what happens. The beauty of the American courts and the American laws is is that nothing that can stand for long and it's not brought to bear in the light of day. So, if something with HB 562 is bad, it will come out. The courts will see that it has not played out in a harmful way. So, I think everybody just needs to take a big, deep breath and let it happen and see what happens. Do you agree?
Yes.
I represent, followed by Christina Khan.
Madam Mayor, City Councilman. I come to you as a citizen of Irving, common name resident. I live at 1514 Franklin Street, Irving, Texas, 75060. I was here two weeks ago, heard everything that was said, from both the opposing as well as the pro-side. I agree, and I'm happy with the outcome. I support the mayor, the city councilman. We voted for the resolution to support House Bill 562. And with Mr. Wilson, I too support the gentleman of the council who voted against it. I see this as a, as Muslim does. This is a unifying opportunity for the city. People are here, seeing how city government works. This is my second time in Irving City Council. I've only been in Irving since 1993, it took me a while to get here. I love my neighbors and the council. I pray for this city, be they Jew, Gentile, Catholic, as myself, Protestant, non-denominational, Democratic, Liberal, Conservative, Republican. We're all, we're all a family. That being said, I see this from the standpoint, I'll take it from a Catholic standpoint. We have courts, tribunals, however you want to register them. Jewish folks have theirs. I don't want my priest or the local bishop to determine for some unpersaken reason, my wife and I should go through a divorce. I don't want them to determine aspects of my divorce, considering child support, division of my estate, what have you. I want those things handled in a court under American laws, with American judges, with American attorneys who are well represented. That's all taken care of. That's how we get right with the state. I go to my church, or to our tribunal, to get right with God and with the church, because we were married in, before the eyes of God and the eyes of the congregants of my church, and recognized. And we have to go back to those folks to get an annulment to be right with God and be right with the church. I want to go to the state to get right with the state. I want to go to the church to get right with the church. I don't hate my neighbors because they're Muslim. I don't see them as a threat. Many do, I don't. I want to live in peace with them. Folks want to live in peace, I want to live in peace. I want to heal. I support the city council, I support the mayor, and I believe that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. I'm Christina Khan. I reside at 1505 Fifth and Road in Irving, Texas. And I'm here to speak to the city council to implore them to observe the interests of all Irving residents and not just the outspoken, highly politicized few. I was born and raised in the nation's capital. I'm a daughter of the, daughters of the American Revolution. And I can trace my heritage back to the Mayflower on both sides of my family. I was raised in the Rocky Mountain West in Colorado's backyard. And three years ago, I made a call to my best friend here in Texas, and she said, "Yeah, come on down, the state is big enough for you." And I got a big welcome when I came here, and I was delighted. Actually, quite pleasantly surprised when I got here. It broke a lot of stereotypes for me when I came down and I saw just how diverse Irving really is. Wow. Now that I'm here, I hope it stays that way. Quite frankly, I wouldn't like to see any group that lives here in Irving felt be, feel like they have to be driven away or to go seek greener pastures on some other side of the border. Preferred, like probably north, I would imagine. I digress, because I'm not a good public speaker. But I guess what I want to tell you is that Islam needs to, excuse me, Irving, Irving needs to become and to remain a place of peace, where peaceful people can live, where all of us can dwell together. Muslims are already marginalized, and we already face our fair share of challenges, which we're doing our utmost to mitigate ourselves. And that's the importance of having alternatives and freedom for alternatives for different types of problem-solving, troubleshooting, to handle all of the sort of remedies that may be available, and to use all the tools in the toolkit, if you will. I don't want to live in a place where division is being excited. I don't want to live in a place where there is fuel for a climate of intolerance and there's no material need, because that would be foolhardy. We have to think about our children. I have a toddler at home, and she's a Texan. And she already says, "Slam, y'all," which I think is really adorable. Anyhow, since the support of House Bill 562, Muslims have suffered. And in fact, there's been threats of violence at our local house of worship in the form of letters and in the form of slurs. And I even thought I heard a personal attack here today. It had me in tears, but I don't know why I even stopped it. We have to take this seriously, because as demonstrated in the wider ZFW area, there have been shootings. This is a dangerous situation. So, I ask you to repeal the motion or to establish a counter-initiative to withdraw support and keep promoting peace in this state city. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Van Dyne, Mayor, and the councilmen, councilmembers. I appreciate you hearing the citizens' views on this, many issues here. And I do want to tell you that I am an Irving resident. I live at 314 Countryside Drive in Irving, Texas. And I have lived in Irving for about 25 years. Never spoken to the city council, and I do appreciate your hard work for our city. I know you put in long hours, but I appreciate it. I would like to voice my support for HB 562, the resolution. I believe our mayor and our four councilmen made the correct decision to support the American laws for our country and our city and our state. It supports our constitution, which we are to live by and abide by. And I believe prohibiting any foreign laws from being established in Texas or in our city is absolutely necessary. What mayhem would prevail if we allowed foreign laws to invade our country? And it would just be, I can't even imagine. I'm surprised we even have to have a resolution as such, stating such a thing. I thought we all knew that as American citizens, we would follow American law. So, I would like to just tell you that I support it in full. Many of my neighbors supported and are not here today. And I just hope that you realize a lot of us here in Irving do support HB 562, HB 562. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. God bless you.
Mayor, City Councilman, and City Manager. I came here tonight, like I was here before a few times, to speak about Southern Irving, about the ordinances and issues related. But I feel out of place tonight. My whole concern is mind-boggling. One of the things that comes to my mind is I serve this country in places that the very, very few will never see. But what is being discussed here tonight is something that really, really hits you. And even though you want to really express yourself and let others know that those that have put their whole being to look at the way our servicemen, women serve, to protect this country. So, everybody can express themselves in a country that is one of the best that anybody can pick up. So, and just like I said, I feel out of place tonight. And what I have to say on the issues of Southern Irving is just have to wait till next time. So, like I said, I wasn't expecting to really be saying what I'm saying here tonight, but I really feel out of place on this issue. And I thank you all very much on that one.
Followed by Kristi Penney.
Good evening. My name is Dean Stollker. And I'm not an eighth-generation Texan, I'm a body and mind Texan. So, I'll correct my dress down, so I can get it correct. I live at 5304 Carnegie, I'm number 109, Los Feliz area. First time I've been here, first time I lived in here last week. I can say that. I, this is a messy system here. This is a messy system. We all beat up and voice ourselves, and we disagree with each other. But I want to voice support for what you guys did last month. For me, it was a simple wish, others a little more complicated perhaps. But I do want to thank you. Madam Mayor, I particularly, you eloquently spoke about the bill and the opposition's resolution. And as a result of the words you said, you clarified things and clarified issues. And you verified, I mean, correctional, some of the comments that I read. But I want to thank you for your standing. I traveled abroad many times, and each time I'd gone to other countries, even though I was an American citizen, it was expected and I did follow their law. It would not have mattered that I broke the law. But I do want to thank you, and I do want to understand why a sovereign nation, either today or throughout history, none of the nations would allow people residing within their borders to pick and choose which law they would yield. It would not be a sovereign nation much longer. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Kristi Penney. I'm at 408 West Sixth Street. Mr. Holden, I just want to let you know that you have the best staff I think in Texas. They really are great. First, I'd like to say, applause for that. Absolutely. I would like to take a moment to say thank you for your service. Thank you for your countless hours, your selflessly dedicated to make Irving a great place to live. And I would like to say a special thank you to those on the council that voted to support House Bill 562. I certainly do not think you're bigots or full of hate. I think you are Americans. Abby put out an article today saying that the mosque and the mayor have been receiving threats. If this is true, I would like to say this is reprehensible and not supported. This is America, and we should be protecting our constitutions and our children. No one should have to fear for the safety of their children. I would like to close by saying once again, we are not bigots or anti-Muslim because we support a House Bill 562. We are Americans. And to the first lady that spoke, we would like to ask you, what were you thinking?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Clyde Pittman. I live at 1401 Colony Drive near Irving. And as many of you know, I also represent someone who, although not physically able to be here tonight, is also very much interested in proceedings of the last two weeks. I'd like to posit a philosophical principle, and that is, based on the 18th-century philosopher Immanuel Kant, who said, "Act only according to that maxim whereby you can at the same time will that it should become a universal law without contradiction." What does that mean? It means that we should always do our duty without regard to any agenda beyond the actual righteousness of our vote in this particular context. Our vote now, or has been, to uphold the Constitution against all assaults, no matter how innocuously they're presented. Allowing any alien law to infringe on the Constitution is a thin opening wedge to greater and greater compromises. So, according to the categorical imperative, if we believe in our constitutional government, we should allow not the slightest change to its sovereignty except for formal amendment. So, you could say, well, we do have people who interpret the Constitution for us, the Supreme Court, of course they do. However, the actions that are being contemplated in Austin this very night has the effect, if asked, of underscoring to the Supreme Court the will of the people as it relates to the sovereignty of the Constitution and our faithfulness to it. We are dealing with an unprecedented phenomenon in the past. All immigrant groups came to this country because, among other things, they recognize the superiority of our constitutional government. Here lies freedom, here lies opportunity, here lies justice. With Muslim immigrants, the situation is different. By their belief, all forms of government are manifestly inferior to Sharia. Muslims are taught that Islam, with its Sharia law, are subject to no other... Muslims are taught that Islam, with its Sharia law, are subject to no other laws. The conflict is therefore automatic and inescapable. Sharia, in their view, must ultimately triumph. Sharia comes directly from Allah. Democracy is a man-made construct, and therefore it's flawed. Our country separates religion and government. Under Sharia, religion is government, government is religion.